Chuck, where are we now? What is that? Is that Montana, Washington State?
Just up the road.
Good old Virginia.
Ocean Pass.
Very pretty.
So from the pullout area with that brick wall that runs up and looks down.
Oh, yeah. Chuck, where are we now? What is that? Is that Montana, Washington State?
Just up the road.
Good old Virginia.
Ocean Pass.
Very pretty.
So from the pullout area with that brick wall that runs up and looks down.
Oh, yeah.
Sure do look forward to the days when we can all be together in the same room. Thank you all for being here. I'd like to call the work session to order and here this evening to your presentation from Bill and his team at Land Planning and Design Associates. And to remind everybody through or of this process, this organization was vetted to do the Jordan's Point Park Master Study. Been through some public meetings, some workshops and a variety of things that Bill and his team have worked on and come back, and this is the culmination of all of that. And for expectations, this evening is a presentation by Bill and his team. I think the planning commission has seen this and look forward to any comments that Arnie and/or Leslie has from their circumstances. And then this being a work session, there's no action to take, but in the regular meeting, under my report, I will add to the agenda an item to accept this Jordan's Point Park Master Plan. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jim or slash Arnie and welcome, Bill.
Arnie will take it, Mr. Mayor, Council.
Thank you, sir.
Very good evening and all, Council. You very hit the highlights, Mr. Mayor, but if I could, the first public open house meeting that we held was on October 9th, 2019. And the next meeting after that for the public were when the two concepts were presented. That was on February 24th, 2020. And at that meeting, there was a request for additional student input, and that was solicited from the students in both the high school, middle school and elementary school. Then the draft master plan was composed from those two concepts, and that was first presented to planning commission back on August, on the 27th. And then now you are getting the final presentation of that draft. And I believe Bill has made a few adjustments to his presentation tonight to accommodate the comments that came in and the comments made by planning commission. And as Bill, please correct me if I'm wrong. There is an opportunity, even if council would like to adopt tonight. There is an opportunity for you to make a few changes based on what what the comments are from this afternoon's work session, and you could bring it back just as a an adoption process, but this is the last opportunity for input that would be substantive that could change the plan.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and with that, unless there are any questions for me, we do have Bill with LPDA here. First, I'd say that they've done a great job, had a great process for getting additional input or input in general. And we're really satisfied with the plan and planning commission was really satisfied as well. And we look forward to any comments that you have.
Bill, before you take it away, I see that Stu Hollensworth and RT Taylor with Davenport have joined us. This is our work session looking at the Jordan's Point Park Master Plan, and you are most welcome to stay, but the business I think you all are supporting doesn't kick off until eight o'clock. But just wanted to shape your expectations from that standpoint. But glad you're here and look forward to your presentations in the regular meeting. But Bill, if you want to take it away now, thank you.
Okay, sure, well, I'm gonna share my screen. Arnie, council members and Mayor. Mr. Mayor, we're very happy to be here tonight, although be it in digital format to present this plan. It's been a long road getting here, I guess, for various reasons. Schedule wise with COVID and you guys were pretty enthralled into your cop plan. At the same time, we were working on the master plan as well, so there's been a lot going on in your community, which is, which is a good thing. I'm gonna share my screen here, hopefully you can see that. All right, are you able to see that? Do you all see my screen, the front slide? Thumbs up, great. Okay, again, we're pleased to be here. So tonight, what I'd like to do is go over quickly our process, the results of the process, what we heard from the public, our own personal team findings and go over the plan in a little more detail, and then our recommendations and open it up for questions and discussions. As you all know, the impetus of this master plan started with the removal of the dam structure. And you all wanted to examine, you know, the relationship, the new relationship with the river and how that dam removal might affect the park's relationship to the river. There also, there was also a RARO study done around the same time or just before that. And also the fact that the previous master plan hadn't been updated, I think, until since the late 90s or early 2000s. So it was quite old and time to create a new plan for the community. Quite quickly, but beyond the water access theme, other themes started to pop up and become pretty strong themes for the community. So besides water access, one of those was history and culture. As you know, it's a very historic site and property. It's in actually a historic district. Environmental resiliency was important in light of the changes to the waterways, habitat, vegetation, as well as changes in our climate and recreation obviously was, was, was very important to the community. We went through a fairly detailed process. It was by no means comprehensive, but it was a fairly detailed process that involved initial site analysis, data gathering, review, basically in all those themes, historic, environmental, recreation. We reviewed all the documents. We examined the site fairly closely, involved a process of confirming needs, community needs, which included looking at the RARO study as well as interviewing your community and then a master plan phase, phase, which is where we are now and wrapping up the master plan phase and then developing an implementation plan outline, which will be part of the final plan document. I'll go back to that slide. We had several team members that contributed to the study, which included specialists in in wetlands and waterways and floodplains, specialists in historic landscapes, transportation specialists, as well as interpretive specialists that dealt with the interpretation of history and environment. We also had a special consultant, which I'll talk about briefly later on, that jumped in partway through the master plan to look at the condition of the timbers that hold that the historic canal tail race walls sit upon. So as I mentioned, we looked at the change in the floodway and floodplain and how that might affect things. The red, blue and yellow line reflect high water, the previous water level and the new water level. We will look at how that affected the shoreline. You know, you actually got a little bit of shoreline back. Takes, it's a little farther to get your canoe or kayak out to the water on the northern end of the end of the site now. And we looked at, you know, the potential to re-vegetate some of those areas. Of course, I mentioned the historic resources as well as recreation. What we saw, you know, above all, is a very well-loved park and cherished, cherished park. It's probably somewhat loved to death. You know, there are some conditions, issues and obsolescence issues out there and some wear and tear. But that just shows how much it's loved by the community, really. There's a visible and tactile history on the site. You can see evidence of the history, which is a pretty impressive. You know, you've got an impressive riverfront. But we also saw that, you know, the park, and I think the public agreed in expressiveness that the park is fairly dominated by vehicles. And there's some conflicts that come with that. And there was somewhat of a stale, you know, recreational program. There wasn't much programmed on, on the site. We did several other studies. There are several other related studies. We reached out to DHR and DHR sent us a letter in regards to the historic district. Specifically, we pulled an EDR and NEPA report on the project, which basically looks at all the environmental aspects. We had our, again, our historic preservation specialist make recommendations as far as best practices and regulatory compliance. We also had an interpretive and narrative plan prepared for as part of the master plan. And I mentioned the conditions. The public process was fairly involved, started with community-wide survey as well as stakeholder interviews, public meetings and an additional public meeting with the schools or process with the schools that already mentioned. And involved several report back meetings with the public and then presentations to to the planning commission and now this presentation to you all. In those meetings, we asked several questions, you know, generally getting at what the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities to improve the park, opportunities to add new facilities and programming. So you can see some of those results here, you know, the bigger, the wordle graphics kind of show what the, the most common responses were. Generally, we heard, you know, a lot about the access to the river, engaging with the river, reducing the vehicular and pedestrian conflicts, honoring and interpreting the history as well as, you know, the importance of, of the environmental aspects of the site. So based on that input, we took, put together a couple loose, you know, rough concepts. One of the concepts, concept A was fairly, I guess, in line with what was already out there, kind of a concept that was, hey, let's fit the new program into the site sort of as is. Let's not rock the boat too much, for lack of a better term. And concept B was a little more far-reaching and involved some, some, you know, bigger changes to the park. So we got some input and reaction on those. One of the things that came up, which was, you know, a pretty common reaction was that, again, folks reacted adversely to the vehicular aspects of the plan, you know, oh, you're showing too much parking and there's too much access here. So we took that to heart and came up with some ways to still have parking and access, but to mitigate that and incorporate more, incorporate it more into the, the design. So the overall, again, this is sort of a summary of the, of the input. You can see again, river access, pedestrian access and the project priorities on the lower, lower right. We also, you know, considered adding a dog park at this point, which is something that has come up, you know, again, and given the conflicts with the floodplain or having a, you know, dog park with fencing in the floodplain in the limited space available, we didn't include it in the plan, but we'll talk a little bit more about that. There are options, if it's important enough to the community at large, to incorporate, you know, a dog park in different forms and different parts of the site, potentially. Again, Arnie mentioned the, the additional input. You know, we heard from the general public about a playground before. Obviously, the, you know, students reinforce that need. We, they really want a playground out there, you know, and as you can imagine, some of their ideas were a little more, I guess, out of the box and, and maybe even forward thinking, we'd say. And, you know, a little more engaging and active and fun. So they came up with all sorts of fun things, but there's also a lot of commonality in what the students said. And you can see some of the top, you know, top four things up there. It all still included access to the river, engaging with the river, improved parking and fishing areas, but it did include things like the playground and porch swings and, and, and things like that. So. So again, the themes with all that input, the themes in terms of the program elements that we would want to include in the master plan based on the public need, started to clearly come into, into view. So we developed a program and again, it followed those basic themes of the water access, engaging with the river, the history and cultural of the site, its environmental resiliency, and then accommodating recreation needs of the community. So from that, in the previous concept input, we developed a draft master plan, which kind of broke the site up or the site really naturally divides itself into, you know, some key areas. And for the purposes of this presentation, I've named them, but they could be named something else. Obviously, the entrance area, what I'd call right now the bluff overlook, which is where your batto, you know, shelter is and all that across from the Miller House. The Turning Basin Promontory, which is that point of land that sticks out into the, into the river where the old Turning Basin was the central promenade area, which is the trace of the old road, you know, and covered bridge, what we call center field for back letter, lack of better terms, where the soccer field is. And then what I'd call the blue-green trailhead, which is really providing you access to the, to the blue way as well as your greenway system, the chest, in the Woods Creek Trail. The plan that we put together is by no means, we're not really pushing a specific design style. In this plan, we're really trying to show a balance between the program elements desired, the recreation and the site conditions. And particularly, one of those was the history, you know, of the site. And again, as I said, it's a very tactile, visible history, and there are many elements on the site that visually you can pick up on. So per some of the recommendations of our historic landscape specialists, we wanted to, we wanted to incorporate that framework, that history into the plan and use it to inform how maybe the design laid out. So you can see here how, you know, we've tried, tried to respond to those elements and incorporate them into the plan in a way that makes the history evident without affecting it or damaging it. So we'll go through some of the key areas. The entry area we looked at. One of the things we, we looked at and reinstated or included in the plan was previous plan to have access from the Chessy Nature Trail up to the Lehighway Bridge or in Red Lovin' Bridge and using the sidewalk over and creating more of a gateway at the park entrance. We also looked at the option to provide a different way of access to the park along to Saunders Drive, accessing VMI to reduce conflicts between the park traffic pedestrians and the VMI traffic. So that's illustrated here, coming through this parking area. It would require a new, a new bridge, but it would provide you a better access to the park and reduced conflicts. This shows, I guess you can see the outline area in red here. This shows the central promenade area. You know, that idea here was to create a drop-off area in, in very visible access to the park, kind of a gateway and sort of a gateway plaza with then access and access spine or promenade that led you directly to a sort of a wayfinding point to the overlook where they'll cover bridges over the river and then improved, improved access to the riverfront here, where you currently had your old boat ramp, which is now quite a bit above the water level and sort of reimagining that area to incorporate stormwater, stormwater best practices to reduce erosion and to better control access in that area. The bluff overlook and entrance, this is really the area that's outside the floodplain and floodway. This ground, everything that we're looking across the way against the river is within the floodplain. This area is outside the floodplain, this top, so we can get a little more aggressive with the program here. What we're showing in here is again, following the sort of the historic structures layout to inform the plan, but we're keeping the picnic shelter, obviously, the restroom shelters. We've added a playground up here. Nature play area, expanded the parking a little bit. We're showing the pedestrian bridge that we've all been talking about for some years now as a, you know, optional access point and some trimming for potential views here. And again, we're, we're keeping and moving the existing timber shelter to create another area for gatherings and picnicking and shelter rentals. So that little bouncing shape was, I will mention the dog park. This is one area we had shown park, additional parking and basketball court over in this area. Again, this is Upland. But we could also examine, you know, fitting a dog park in there. It would be a smaller dog park, but definitely you can see sort of the two shapes, maybe this small dog, the small dog area here, the entrance gate here and the large dog area here potentially. So the Turning Basin Promontory really is providing and honoring the existing access here. It's a very sort of bucolic space right now, used for picnicking and viewing of the river. That wouldn't change, which we're not adding a whole lot of program in here. We're suggesting that we protect these trees, that we also re-vegetate and augment the vegetation on the banks and stabilize this embankment, stabilize the historic turning basin walls, you know, through proper means. Better, better emphasize that walk around, providing some access and stabilizing the erosion on the point down to the water. And then again, providing access, a loop path around the site somewhat like you, somewhat like you have now. This area down here, M, we also, that's a very attractive area for folks. Folks who want to get down to that old tail race. And we suggest that we find a way to accommodate them doing so because they're going to continue to do that and wear it out. And I think we can accommodate that and have a nice little sitting area that they can, they can, they can view that part of the water because they're going to want to do that. I'll mention, I hadn't mentioned in the last slide, but this G and H, this is the old toll house area, so there's a foundation and remnants of an old toll house here, or that's where it was. There likely would be remnants of it, you know, underground. We thought this could be a nice area, a sitting area with seat walls along a loop path around the, the central field area that could be used for folks, but it could also be used in its form, like we're showing to interpret the toll house and the covered bridge and that sort of thing. Central field area, not a whole lot of changes there. We could shift, you know, the field and regrade things. What we're showing, the big change here is, as you can see, the access road no longer comes around the backside between it and the Maury River. It would be between the old mill race and the field and would access an area back in the green, blue trailhead. We've got a loop path around the entire loop track around the entire field. And we've started to look at some event, you know, the possibility of creating some dual use out of the site and creating some event space that could be used to program, excuse me, community events, music festivals, fairs and things like that, which area E indicates some of that where you could potentially set up a temporary stage and pavilion with tie-downs, but nothing permanent, because again, this is all in the floodway and floodplain. So everything has to be fairly low profile in here. So the end of that area, we call the blue, green, blue way, greenway trailhead or the blue-green trailhead. And you can see what we've shown here is the continued access and turnaround. This color, as you see, notice it's not gray, it's brown. We're anticipating that this could be pervious pavement. We think that's going to have to be looked at pretty seriously on the site from the standpoint of the stormwater regulations as well as best practices. And for, for dealing with some of the stormwater. So this would be a trailhead accommodating both parallel parking and pull-in parking with maybe permeable pavers and grass pave. E, again, potentially a small playground area associated with that, another playground as well as, you know, adjacent lawn and staging area for, for a stage, potential spot for vendor parking as well as parallel parking again off the main road, improved canoe and kayak launch and then improved signage and trailhead to access the sites. Trail system as well as the Woods Creek Trail. You'll notice something up here. It doesn't really show up very well. It, it shows up on some of the other sheets, but there are areas along the shoreline that folks are naturally wanting to get out to. They're climbing on the, the root buttresses of trees and fishing off the embankment. It happens everywhere, but obviously those areas get eroded and they're hard to stabilize. What we're proposing is part of the stabilization for some of those areas. You go ahead and accommodate the use and you create sort of a, what we call a belvedere, where you, you know, can get out to the water, but it's in line with the embankment. So we, to a comment, one, the comment. So we, to accommodate, one, accommodate the use and stabilize the embankment at the same time in a, in a more resilient, resilient way. Again, the historic preservation, the historic district came up. Our, our consultant gave some recommendations in regards to that, which are generally, you know, fairly practical, you know, that we would want to protect known and likely architectural, ar- archaeological resources and minimize the land disturbance around those. Anything that we do out here, because of the nature of it, would involve some further investigation. In particular with DHR would want to know, there might need, need to be some surveys done to identify, you know, some of the limits of some of the resources if we are working around them and disturbing, disturbing the ground. They recommended to create a visitor experience and an interpretive plan that was research based. Maybe not so much story based, it would involve stories, but it would be based on the facts and sound, sound research, research. And then, you know, they obviously recommended that we, you know, ensure compatibility with it, with any new interventions or designs on the site that would respond to the historic character. And that doesn't mean replicating or mimicking, you know, historic materials and things like that and creating a, you know, fake history. It just means respecting it and calling attention to it without impacting it in a, in a adverse, adverse way. So again, you can see larger site and we've highlighted some of those main, main features that, you know, we've incorporated into the plan. So the interpretive program rigs ward prepared a framework plan for interpretation of the site, which involved signage, proposed directional signage and then interpretive signs about natural resources as well as history. And they're, they're recommending a variety of different ways to do that. Yes, signs and things like that, but then incorporating more teaching moments, tactile experiences, you know, really bringing again, the tactile history, the visible tangible stuff, you know, incorporating that into a design in a way, in a way that folks can really grab on to rather than reading us just a sign. These are some of the things that they've, they've talked about and recommended. One example that could be the bluff walk, the upper bluff walk along the old, the old turning basin wall where along that walkway, say if there was a new paver or concrete walkway, you know, there will be markers potentially that would mark out the length of, you know, a bathtow or, or some of the, some of the things that came up in there. So the folks can understand the scale of the space and what was going on there at the time. We looked at stormwater quality. Again, this whole bottom area on the Maury River is in the floodplain. So we can't really incorporate mitigative measures in that area. You know, we would, with improvements to the park, it would be disturbing the, the park property. So we would have to meet stormwater requirements. However, those stormwater requirements wouldn't able to be met or mitigated in the flood or floodplain area. So we're recommending best practices in that area to minimize disturbance and increase infiltration, you know, looking at things like adding pervious pavements as well as revegetation of some of the outbound areas of the floodplain, which potentially could create credits for stormwater. The upland areas is where we're really looking at some, integrating some of the specific mitigative stormwater measures. You know, with storage and infiltration and biofiltration and things like that. It could also be done offsite as, as well through purchase of mitigation credits or mitigating offsite on another upland project in the same watershed is a pretty common approach. Permitting, obviously anything we do with the Maury River in this regard and access will involve permitting. There's nothing here that would really prevent us from getting anything permitted, but you still have to go through that process. There's obviously the section 106, some historic resources. There's protected species. We've all probably heard about the Kentucky brown bat and its nesting habits by now as well as the spiny, spiny muscle. But again, we don't see any huge barriers here. We started to take the master, master plan program elements and sort of analyze those in the context of the themes that we started with. Again, the historic resources, protection and interpretation, the environmental protection and resiliency, recreation as well as the water access and sort of evaluated each program element in terms of how it responded to or met some of those, some of those themes. And if there was a demonstrated need expressed in, in our, in our public input. And that started to, to illuminate some priorities. Again, they didn't really change from what we were hearing initially, but you can see some of those priorities listed on, on the sheet. So next steps really is to finalize that prioritization, get your all's input and develop a implementation plan, which will be added to that set of sheets where we'd look at probable cost and phasing of the elements. Give you an idea of implementation steps in terms of what we would suggest you start with. Often folks will start with a demonstration project that gets the community engaged and galvanized, you know, behind, behind the project, project and shows some, some progress. So we look at that as well as start to look at, looking at some, you know, funding sources and partners. You know, what funding sources are appropriate to assign to the implementation of some of these elements. Obviously, you know, partnering with DJF with the boat, you know, and canoe and kayak launches. There's volunteer groups that you have in your community that are interested in the stream bank stabilization and revege- vegetation. So, you know, it'll be a mix of partners, volunteers, grant funds and in CIP funds. So that's all I had. Hopefully I wasn't too long-winded, but if you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you, Bill. Members of council, any questions?
I, I have just a couple. Bill, can you, can you take it back to the map of the? My first question, I guess, is, so, so the soccer field under, under this new plan, would it actually be moved out towards the, the river or will it stay in exactly the same place? I'm trying to understand how we have the space for the, for the, for the road on that side. Would the soccer field be like moved over some amount? Or would it pretty much stay exactly where it is?
I think it was nudged over a little bit. That's, I'd have to look at the existing survey we had. That's a good question. As I remember, we were trying to keep it in the same place because we had some room over here, which we'd like to, you know, revegetate some of that. There's a little bit of a slope here, but we had a little bit of room on this side where folks are actually driving down the side already currently. So I want to say it's in the same place, but at the same time, I think we did nudge it over 10 feet or so.
Okay. And I guess the other question is that DD, that kind of promontory thing. So is that where you envision fisher, people who like to fish? I mean, would that be like the place where you think that they would do that? I mean,
Yeah, so these are, these are spots where folks are going now and wearing out the embankment and eroding things. So what we're talking about is again, creating some sort of a, a little belvedere promontory built into the slope, you know, where we stabilize a slope and off, also offer access for the activity that's inevitable to happen.
Right. Well, I, I, I would say that, that people who fish kind of like to spread out.
Yes.
Though I'm wondering, I, I, I'm wondering if just having, would it be feasible or doable to have kind of a smaller structure, but more than one of them?
So yeah, that's what we're, let's go to the bigger plan and see if they show up. They look like little, little peers, they're not, but there's, you know, here's a place where that would happen. There's always people standing right here and fishing still.
Right.
There's another one here. I don't know if you can see my arrow.
Yeah.
There's another one here and there's one here. There may need to be one here. So right now we're showing four of those areas along. The general, the folks are going now.
Okay. And I'm trying to, can, can you clarify one more time though, the, the, the proposed entrance to, I get from the Woods Creek or the Chessie, or the Woods Creek Trail, I guess. I'm, I'm trying to picture based on my memory of, of, of that. Because now when you come down the Woods Creek Trail, you're coming down and you're circling around Miller, Miller House, but
Yeah, that would remain the way it is, is shown here. What we're showing here, there's another potential trail system that folks are using and we're just showing those paths aligning and being connected.
Okay.
Along the riverfront. So, you know, the, the trail along the river would still exist, this little sort of nature trail, but we're trying to provide more of a permanent sort of path structure, you know, that folks could use and handle that additional foot traffic. But yeah, sorry, the wood, I, I actually referred to this as, I think at one point as a Woods Creek Trail.
But it would be that. And then last question for me. And, and really good presentation, by the way. Thank you. The towards the, God, I forget the turnaround or whatever you call it, like where the, where the trees are at the point.
Oh, here?
No, where the tail race is.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the, the point that extends out into the thing that I'm trying to figure out what that, that, that red kind of brick like
Yeah, so this, this, so this is just illuminating, you know, a pathway that would be, you know, a certain, maybe not gravel, maybe some sort of a specific pavement that both highlighted the historic form of what was here before with, with the, the weigh station that was here, the tail race and the walls of the turning basin. As you recall, this was all a turning basin. And also serves to stabilize this point. This point's eroding and it's a natural process, but it's, you know, this is all sandy soil and it's starting all cave in and slough off, off this point. So what we're proposing is to stabilize this, interpret the history, provide access to it, protect it and stabilize it, but also provide access potentially down to the, to the, to the water here. You have kind of a slope here and a little gravel point and bar that comes out in, into the river and is a quite pleasant little area. There's other than some road noise from, from the bridge. And some of the discussion has even been, hey, you know, if we're going to have a vendor out there that's, you know, dealing in canoes and kayaks and float trips and things like that and say there's a kids day or something, would it be fun and, and useful to have maybe a short float just to get folks into the sport and teach them where, you know, you could, you could float just a short distance with your small, small kids and things like that. So.
Got it. Thank you.
I've got a couple of questions or, or points. I really appreciate the presentation and the attempt to provide a little bit of something to everyone because I was at some of those forums and I know a lot of ideas were thrown at you. And, and so I think this incorporates so many good ideas. My middle schooler took a field trip to this area and their input was requested. And the kids felt very special to be asked their input. And then my daughter asked me when I ever heard about her input and I never really did. And so I'm glad to finally see some of it in the master plan. And so I'm kind of struck on the balance and I, and I, and it's, it's a careful balance of history and expenditures on history when there's already a museum there and uses that people can use over and over and over. As a, and while history, we need to tell the story of that important part of Lexington. Someone might spend time in analyzing the history one time versus kids that beg their parents, can I go back again and again and again? And folks that want to access the river again and again and again. And so that's a careful balance and that'll be on us to, to try to strike that balance. I love featured BB, that bridge. I'm afraid that we don't have enough parking at this location. Whenever you mention events, I don't know where people would park. Folks that are, live here in Lexington know that VMI is making this entrance much, much, much more prominent. This will be how many people will be accessing VMI for all athletic events, all major events. This will be the entrance to VMI, especially when they build the 400 spot parking garage that is accessible from essentially Saunders Drive or, or this, this direction. And so accessing all the features at the point from the one parking lot off of Stono Lane and then the other smaller parking lot near the bathrooms. It's going to be, parking will be at a premium, especially even losing the 15 spots that are behind the soccer field as it is now, as you go up to the overlook. So I just, you know, having go to Ridgeview Park in Waynesboro all the time. There's tons of parking at Ridgeview Park. There's tons of at Gypsy Hill Park. And I just hope that we make sure that we have enough parking at this location.
And we did account and I want to say we ended up with equal or a little bit more parking than original. And that was accomplished through some of the parking along this, this entryway and down by the canoe kayak.
Right, at the far end. You can put about 30 or 20 cars down at the far end currently on a busy weekend. We're put, people put in for tubes and everything. At KK for a small boat access, how will people get their boats to that location?
Okay, we get to that, there's the dog park. Sorry, I gotta find KK. Oh, you're talking about down here.
Yeah.
Down at the point. Sorry.
No, that's all right. I just envisioning a family with kayaks.
Yeah, okay, yeah, yeah. So, um, yeah, this wouldn't be specifically an area program for public, you know, parking and use and dragging everybody's kayaks. I think it's more of, you know, stabilizing this embankment, providing access to the water, you know, for special events and, and things, and things like that. But, you know, you're correct, you wouldn't necessarily be dragging your kayak down to this area to use that K area as a launch.
Okay, I just said boat access.
Yeah.
All right, those are my questions right now. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
The council members have questions?
Not, not a question per se, but wanted to express my appreciation for, including the input from the high school students. I got to participate in that, in that process and, and watching their excitement on providing some, I guess, some out of the box ideas that, that you, the term you use to implement in, into the plan. And I, I see quite a few put into what's been presented. And looking forward to sharing this back with, with Boxer Wood, who kind of, kind of spearheaded the effort. They were very enthusiastic about entertainment and nature and recreation. See, so see those elements in this, in this plan is, is really awesome. And environmentally, the stabilization of, of the erosion areas to decrease the impact that, that all the foot traffic is going to have on the area is, is also very important. So it's good, it's good to see those and awesome, looks great. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Any other council members have questions? Bill, I've got a couple in case council members do have something come to mind. Were there any deed restrictions or issues or limitations on the park?
Those would relate to two things. One would be the athletic field use. And we looked at that agreement and that agreement had expired. So there had been some restrictions on the use of that athletic field, but those are no longer in place, as I understand. The only other ones we're aware of are the ones that Uh, the only other ones we're aware of are the ones that go with the historic, um, district uh, in terms of what we can do on the site, uh, in relation to those, uh, those historic resources. So that does provide some, some limitations, but also, um, you know, some opportunities at the same, same time.
Right. On the, um, southern part of Stono Lane, there's the current parking area, and you'd indicated perhaps a, um, uh, dog park or basketball courts. How much land is around there? Do you recall?
Um, in here?
Correct.
Not a whole lot. I mean, you can see, I don't have the square footage here, but you can see this is about 60-foot wide. Uh, and we, you know, maybe, you know, maybe 200-foot long in here. So this area is probably oh, 90, uh, by, you know, 3, 300.
Okay.
In that area. So, um, it would be a small, you know, it's not your, your, it's not your, it's not a hu- it wouldn't be a huge dog park area. It'd be fairly, fairly limited. Uh, there are, there would be some opportunity there to expand, uh, some of the features or the fenced-in area up into the slope a little bit. Uh, we've done that before on, on, on projects, and potentially that could be done in a sensitive way.
Gotcha. Um. When you, uh, when David was asking you about KK and the terrace going down to the Turning Bas- Um, in my mind, I'm envisioning, um, that you would have, uh, poured concrete and perhaps a, a brick walk on top of it. Is that just a matter of how much you want to spend, um, to fortify and, and put that kind of walkway in?
Yeah, we would look at materials. Uh, we, obviously, we need to look at, you know, if, if it wasn't for the floodway and floodplain, you know, maybe we would look at just gravel. We would have to examine that a little bit closer to pick the right materials. I know you have gravel out there right now, but I think we'd want to use some kind of hardened or stabilized surface, uh, eventually, um, you know, to protect, protect that area just from general wear and tear, as well as the energy, you know, of a flood. Uh, in this, yeah, this is contemplated, this, this, what we call the river terraces, you know, are contemplated as potentially sort of monolithic, you know, concrete slabs that are keyed into the slope, uh, that step down to the, to the gravel bar. You know, the other option here would be just to, um, you know, stabilize it with a revetment, you know, or maybe a more attractive revetment. I mean, that's all we're really creating here, is some sort of a revetment uh, that stabilizes the soil loss and the loss of land there, in, in doing it in a way that people can use it, rather than a pile of rocks.
Yeah, right now, it's kind of rough terrain, as well as on the northern end of the island. It's hard to navigate, uh, either for fishermen or just people, you know, trying to walk the shoreline.
Yeah, and that may be part of the problem. Some folks, there's quite a bit of, I don't know, there's maybe six or seven feet of gray change between the top of this point and where the gravel bars, and folks are trying to get down there, and they're sort of walking down the bank, and in doing that, they're destabilizing it even more. So we need to do something with it.
And it's tough to get back up at this point, so.
It is, yeah.
Um, uh, uh, three items, I think. Um, one, uh, that these documents that you, uh, are presenting to us tonight, um, Arnie has a copy of those. They're accessible on our website, so that folks that want to find out more or study a little bit more in depth, they can do so.
Yes, all the studies, um, uh, are available and can be made readily available. Uh, so, yeah, like I said before, this plan, the summary plan, is a series of sheets, graphic sheets, which will then include the implementation plan, but there's all this background data that you just mentioned, you know, the reports and research, uh, that have been done on the site that we will include as a, you know, appendix, I guess, that would be available for review.
Great. Uh, members of council, have any other questions? Uh, hearing none. Uh, Bill, I want to say thank you on behalf of all the citizens of Lexington, um, elementary, middle, uh, high school, and, uh, children of all ages that are with you this evening. And, um, uh, love to see how it's all come together and really excited about the prospects of implementation. And for those who may be, uh, listening on Facebook Live or something, I would leave you with one task to, to follow up with us on, is if you, um, if we were able to discover $100,000 for capital improvement, uh, what would be the first projects that you would, uh, recommend that the city embark upon? And again, not, not for tonight's conversation, but, um, for follow-up and, and, uh, final pieces.
Yeah, yeah, sir. We can definitely look at that as part of the implementation plan. We'll note that and, and direct it, address, uh, address it directly. And I'd like to just say thank you as well. It's been a joy working with the community. Um, you guys are, are interested, engaged, concerned, and activated, and, and it's, and, and you do it in a nice way. So it's, uh, that's refreshing. So thank you for that.
Never been any question about the level of engagement of our neighbors, no question. Uh, thank you, and, um, we'll look forward to, uh, finalizing things. And just, um, uh, term-wise, um, as I say in our regular meeting, um, since there aren't any adjustments really to be made, um, if everyone's comfortable moving forward, um, uh, making, uh, taking the step to accept this, um, not necessarily to adopt it, that we're going to implement everything that's on there, but accept it and then begin working on it, uh, as we have capital and, um, uh, contributions and, um, uh, opportunities for endowment, um, of different parts of the island, perhaps. So, um, anything else from councilor staff? Hearing none, um, I will adjourn at, uh, 7:52, Janie. Uh, Bill, again, thank you to you and, uh, the, uh, large team that you assembled. Please pass our thanks along, and we'll look forward to, uh, uh, making progress in the future.
Thank you so much. I'm going to unshare my screen, hopefully. And we'll, uh, talk to y'all later. Thanks so much.
Terrific.
And I'll step off here.
We'll stay and, um, uh, look to come back in about eight minutes at eight o'clock.
Get the Google app to search what you see. And search the garbage.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the September 17th edition of the Lexington City Council. I'm glad you're with us and, um, a special welcome to, uh, the press. Uh, we have Doug Harwood and, uh, we have Mary Alice Russell covering from Rockbridge Report. And, um, uh, thank you all for being here. Uh, first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If y'all will stand and join me.
Pledge of Allegiance.
With the flag. And to the Republic.
And to the which is there.
One nation under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
You all very much. For consideration of the agenda, um, uh, two items for your, um, uh, consideration. Um, one is, would like to, uh, add a 12.3 under the mayor's report, uh, for, um, except, uh, consideration of the Jordan's Point Plan, Park Plan that we just heard in our work session. And, uh, if there's no objection to that, we will accept the agenda as presented. And, uh, next, if you all would, uh, join me in a moment of silence, we, um, in, over the past couple of weeks, uh, two folks who had served on city council, uh, and served the city in other capacities as well, uh, passed away. One was George Pride, um, and the other Larry Brumall. And so I would ask that you join me in a moment of silence as we think about them and their families and, um, the service that they provided to our community. If you'll join me in silence, please. Thank you all very much. Uh, next item on the agenda is, uh, presentations, and we have, um, RT Taylor with us from Davenport. Uh, calling the city manager for, or Jake, for introduction of RT and the, the materials, uh, with that conversation.
Mr. Mayor, uh, our finance director, Jake Adams, will lead off.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Jim. Um, good evening, Mayor and, uh, council members. Uh, tonight, we have RT Taylor and Joe Mason, um, our financial advisors. They're present tonight to, um, give us a presentation on an advanced refunding opportunity for our 2013 issued utility bonds. Uh, they have a very thorough presentation prepared, but I would like to tee things up just a little bit for them. Um, typically with these bonds issued through the Virginia Resources Authority, there's a standard 10-year no-call period. And once that 10-year, uh, callable period, um, occurs, the best opportunity typically for refinancing is at that 10-year point when tax-exempt refinancing is available. Um, however, with the bond market being what it is and near current historical lows, uh, there is a significant opportunity for refinancing and savings in the upcoming years in the taxable bond market. Um, so with that, I'll turn things over to RT and Joe, and, uh, Davenport and myself will be available for any questions after the presentation that you may have.
Okay. Thank you, Jake. Uh, this is RT Taylor with Davenport. Uh, thank you all for the opportunity to present this, uh, present this evening. I will share my screen here very shortly. Bear with me one second.
RT, I'm not sure you're geographically located, but, um, uh, it was good to see you on Monday, uh, presenting to the Bloomberg Resource Authority. If Chuck and I look familiar, it's, uh, because we, we heard your pitch on Monday.
Okay. Thank you.
Glad that you're with us tonight.
Appreciate it. Um, and I, I'm, I'm just gonna check in with y'all real quickly. It looks like y'all can see my screen now. Can you please confirm? Good deal. All right, thank you. So, uh, again, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to present this evening. Joe and I, uh, work with the city as financial advisors. Good deal. All right. Thank you. So again, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to present this evening. Joe and I work with the city as financial advisor. And as your financial advisor, we periodically review your debt portfolio for refunding opportunities for cash flow savings. And what we've identified, given the current market as Jake spoke to and the historical historically low interest rates, both taxes and taxable. The 2013 A bonds that were issued through Virginia Resources Authority are really reflecting some nice cash flow savings. Now, one thing we want to point out is that those bonds were issued on a tax exempt basis. And in fact, they had taken out on a on a tax exempt advanced refunding basis, some 2005 obligations that y'all had at the time related to what I believe is the courthouse facilities and parking deck. So as of the beginning of calendar year 2018, laws changed and you can no longer advance refund bonds, municipal bonds on a tax exempt basis. You have to wait until the call date to do them on a tax exempt basis. But as taxable rates have continued to fall, we have an opportunity here to advance refund these ahead of the call date, which is three years from now on a taxable basis. And so we'll, we'll go through this step by step here shortly, but just wanted to make sure we point that out. Also, we would like to point out that VRA would like to know if we're proceeding with the refunding opportunity by early October. And we understand that tonight is really informational purposes only. Just want to present the opportunity to you all. Get your input and then if you'd like to proceed, give us sort of a nod this evening, if you will, and we'll work with bond council to bring back the appropriate on October 1st, which I believe is your next council meeting date. Okay. So in the next few pages, we'll talk through some sensitivities, a little bit on the historical trends with respect to rates. But at the bottom of page one, and I'm looking at the bottom right hand corner for the page numbers on my screen. You have approximately $6.6 million remaining outstanding on the 2013 bond. And the coupons range originally from 2% to 5%. The callable maturities range between 2 and 8% to 5%. All along, we are not extending the debt past 2035. That's the original maturity date. And we're going to stick with that, match it and refinance it, if you will, before or at the same same final maturity date. Okay. Any questions there? Okay. I just like to keep it conversational even though we're doing this remotely. So y'all interrupt as as needed. Okay.
Well, I'm sorry. I do have a question. Can you go back to one screen?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it said maturities 11, 1, 2024 through 2035. Are you saying that you are extending the maturity date for some of them, the ones that would have come become mature on November 1st, 2024, for instance, or I'm a little
Not at all.
That's a
Or we're basically taking the same, this is Joe Mason, we're taking the same debt service schedule and just substituting a lower interest rate for the interest rate that currently exists on the bonds.
Okay, so
If you were refinancing your own mortgage and you had 15 years to run on it, we're just going to the bank and asking them for a new loan for the same period of time at a lower interest rate.
Okay, so for the bonds, I guess what I'm confused is that range of dates. Are you saying that some of these come mature on 2024? And some of them mature on 2035 or?
Yeah, well, they are. The original loan is what's called a a serial bond issue, meaning you borrowed a sum of money, which was the nine and a half million. And that nine and a half million had principal payments spread out from 2013 through 2035.
Okay.
And all we're doing is taking the principal amounts from 2024 to 2035. And refinancing those to affect lower interest rates for the maturities that occur between 2024 and 2035.
Okay, so so we will still have a principal payment to make on 2024. It'll just be on a new bond. Okay, I'm good. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. So if we flip to page two, this in this page, you're going to see two more just like it. So we're going to walk through this first page methodically. And just get a sense of the methodology here and then we'll be able to flip very quickly through the next two scenarios. So first and foremost, this is if we refunded the bonds, the callable bonds, the maturities that we just spoke about from 2024 through 2035, those are the callable maturities. And we said, we want to reap the benefits, get those cash flow savings every year going forward so that our debt service budget steps down at the same level for each year going forward. So your current budget debt service is reflected in the first column on the right hand side. So under the right hand matrix called annual savings. The net prior debt service column, if you did not do any kind of refunding, just go around, you just continued paying your debt service on these maturities. That is the stream of debt service that you would pay. If we refinance at the current rates, the next column over the net refunding debt service is what you would pay on the new bonds. And so you can see that between those two columns, you would benefit each year versus the current budget for about $47,000 on average. And over 15 years, that would add up to roughly $747,000. Okay. Any questions on the matrix on the right hand side?
RT, just one, maturity says 11, 135 and your year shows 630, 36.
Correct. And that's fiscal year. So your fiscal year would be July 1 of 35 through 630 of 36. Right? Yep. Okay. And then the matrix on the left hand side gives you a little bit about a little bit of an overview about the refunded bonds, the the bonds we're currently looking at refunding. And the gross savings, net savings, et cetera. So at the top of the left hand matrix, again, you were looking at about $6.6 million in callable bonds outstanding. Those coupons range anywhere from 2 and 8 to 5%. Your call date is three years away on 11, 1 of 23. And Mr. Ayers, that's going back to your question. We've still got principal payments due between now and 11, 123. And at that point, 11, 124 and beyond are the principal maturities that are callable. And that's what we would fund now as an escrow to take those 24 through 35 maturities out. And then there is no penalty to prepay those at the call date. So that's what that call price of 100% is signifying. And we're refunding maturities in this scenario of 11, 124 through 11, 12035. Now, on the refunding bonds, the new bonds that we would potentially issue now to take out the old debt. Again, our final maturity is matched to the existing debt. We are not extending it. So that those new bonds would mature at 11, 1 of 2035. And right now in the current market, even with taxable rates, this would equate to roughly 1.7%, 1.673% on a true interest cost basis. The 1.949% is with all the costs wrapped in. Okay. And then down there on lines 14 through 18, that's just a sort of a recap, if you will, of the matrix on the right. So again, gross cash flow savings over 15 years total $747,000. And I'm gonna jump over to line number 17. That's roughly 10% present value basis on the refunded debt. And so somebody might ask, well, what does that mean? Generally speaking, the industry benchmark, when you go to refund bonds for savings, you want to target a minimum of 3%. And obviously we're a multiple of that in the current market, which is why we are presenting to you this evening and thinking this is a very nice opportunity to take down some savings on this refinancing. And then line 18 is simply showing you the
We'll just jump in here. Just want to make it clear in in plain English. So the the savings column you see in green. Just to be clear, that is net of all costs associated with transaction, whether they be from VRA or your local costs. So what you are going to clear, if if the markets hold, there's no guarantee the interest rates are going to stay where they are between now and the time VRA prices these bonds. But if interest rates stay reasonably close to where they are, the 747,000 is net or clear of all costs. You're not going to have to come out of pocket for any costs against that savings.
Hey, I I'm sorry. This is probably a very basic question, but I want to make sure that I understand this. So the reason why we cannot refinance into non taxable bonds now is because not enough time has elapsed or the law, help me understand why why we can't refinance them into non taxable bonds now.
Sure. Now, that's a fair question. In 2017, in December of 2017, the I can't recall off the top of my head exactly what it's called, but it's called the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act of 2017, I think. It was more commonly known as the Trump Tax Cuts, the end of 2017. A provision in that bill, that law prohibited the advanced refunding of tax exempt bonds. So these were originally tax exempt bonds issued through VRA. And Congress saw fit to prevent refunding those bonds in advance of the call date. Tax exempt bonds cost the federal government some money from the standpoint that the tax exemption reduces revenue to the federal government. So Congress decided that they could no longer allow that. So as a result, you can still refund bonds in advance of the call date. You just have to use taxable bonds. Do that.
Got it.
And because tax taxable bond rates, taxable interest rates are so low, we have this opportunity before us.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Extremely unique circumstances to be before. No one really anticipated the pandemic. One question for you, Joe, the tax exempt versus the taxable, that makes no difference to the city of Lexington. Interest rates, the interest rate, it's really just who's going to be buying them on the other side and people who can benefit from tax exempt income. Somewhat protects them from calls and getting refinanced at a lower rate because rates essentially the Fed has put interest rates short term zero. The curve is relatively flat and taxable rates are visibly low for everybody looking for income. Does he agree with that, Joe?
I think he had to go on. I think he had to go on mute, but that's a fair assessment. Yes, sir.
And again, just to confirm, tax exempt or taxable is in for the city of Lexington and our citizens, it's irrelevant.
Correct. Like you said, it's y'all end up paying a specific rate regardless of whether they're taxed exempt or taxable.
Thank you, RT.
Thank you. Sorry, I go on mute. I apologize.
Okay, so with that said, we're gonna, the same setup and the same methodology is going to be reflected on the next page. And we're calling this one upfront savings option A. Okay. So again, we're looking at only refunding what are called callable bonds. They are the ones from 24 through 35. We're not capturing any of the non callable bonds in the next couple of few years. And again, your outstanding principal amount to be paid off is $6.6 million. And we said, well, what happens if we try to pull up some of that, you know, some of those savings up earlier? And one thought would be that we could do that and benefit between fiscal years 22, 23 and 24 to roughly $168,000 a year over there on the far right. And you'll notice that the total gross savings drops a bit from 747 down to 670. And that's just a function of putting a little bit of principal out into the future so that you can delay the principal and those savings can effectively be pulled up for the next few budget years. Does that make sense? So I'm looking at the 168, call it 170 per year in the first few years right in this area. By virtue of structuring the principal out a little bit further and you can see out in 20, call it 2025 and beyond, you're you're essentially getting down to break even. So your prior debt service and your refunding debt service are almost break even out here in the future where we really pull up the savings is up here in the first few years. That's the only only real difference between the level savings approach and the upfront savings approach. It does impact the gross savings. Your present value goes down just slightly. You remember we were at 9.92. Now we're at 9.73% present value, 670 versus 747. So that was just something we sort of thought would provide you all with some perspective that you didn't necessarily have to take it just in level savings mode. But you could actually try to pull some of that up if you thought that that would be helpful for specific projects or because you wanted to hedge a little bit due to uncertainties in the budget for the next year or two. Or just because you want to set it aside in your unreserved fund balance, et cetera. There's just several different options where that might be helpful. Now, if we take one more step and go to page four. This is where we did a little bit more strategy. We said, what if we were to refund the callable bonds from 24 to 35? But we wanted to pull all the savings if we could up through up into fiscal year 22. So next fiscal year's budget. Maybe there is a very specific project that needs to be done, or maybe there's just more uncertainty on revenue collections, et cetera. It's just, it's one more look at being strategic in how we pull down these savings. Okay. So what we ended up doing, trying to minimize the expense, if you will, we pulled into the mix, one of the non callable bonds. So you can see that 11, 1 of 21 maturity on line six on the matrix on the left. That's right here. We've actually incorporated a a maturity that's non callable. And what that does is it allows us to push that principal out here a little bit. But that effectively pulls those savings up here. Again, we're not extending the final maturity. It's still going to be 11, 12035. It's just a matter of being able to shift principal out a little bit further on one of these maturities. of these maturities to get those savings up front. So it has a slight impact to your gross savings of $664,000 versus what was 670. So that's roughly $6,000 difference. So it doesn't cost you a whole lot, but you can pull up that much more into fiscal year 22 or next fiscal year's budget. Okay?
Can I clarify, is this slide option B, this was not provided ahead of time, right? Is this?
That's correct. That's correct.
This is the first time I'm seeing this. Okay. All right.
That's my, Joe, I apologize.
No problem.
When we were previewing with this with staff, I came up with this idea, and so we're walking this on live, I apologize.
Sounds good to me. Thanks.
Okay. So with that said, those are sort of the three options we've laid out in our discussions with staff. One was level savings, roughly $47,000 a year on average. If you take it up front with just the callable bonds, you save about roughly 170 over the next few years. And then if you really wanted to focus in on the next budget year, you could pull some additional savings up in '22. So one thought, just wanted to give y'all some perspective on where rates are. We are still near historical lows. This is a tax exempt bond index, just to give you again, some perspective on the tax exempt markets and how quickly rates can move up or down. The orange ovals here provide a little bit of, show you where the market actually moved upwards of 100 basis points within a relatively short period of time. And over the past month, we've actually seen interest rates tick up by about 20 basis points. Similar picture here on the taxable slide where the 10-year treasury, again, your debt goes out 15 years, so the 10-year treasury is a good proxy for where, where your rates are right now. And the 10-year treasury constant maturity is roughly at 0.6 or 0.7%, somewhere in that range. And so that, that's all to say that yes, we're at lows, rates can move within a short period of time in a material amount. So we wanted to give you a little bit of perspective on the sensitivity of, and timing of that. So under column B, this is the level savings current market approach. And that will tie back to that page we've already talked about previously. So this B is the column you saw on the level savings analysis. And we said, what happens between now and pricing? Because VRA doesn't price their bonds until October 28th, so we're roughly, you know, 50 days away. The 10 basis points increase, so 0.1% increase up would actually eat into our savings by roughly $70,000 to $75,000. Okay? But that's still, you can see, you're still in the $40,000 to $45,000 range for annual savings. If rates actually were to move down 10 basis points, you'd actually increase over your current market by about another $70,000 to $75,000. So you move up to about on average $50,000 annual savings. Okay? So it's a fairly linear relationship. Going 10 basis points up or down, it's going to either save you or cost you $70,000. But again, they're still very good level of savings. If it goes up, you're going from 10% to 9%. If they go down, you go from 10% to 11%. Present value savings. And I keep, let me stop there for a second. One of the benchmarks that we typically look at for setting the parameters on whether this is an acceptable refunding that you want to move forward with or not, would be to set the parameters based on that present value number. And that's why, that's why we keep referring to line three, because that's a pretty standard benchmark to do that. And we'll get into what's the appropriate level of that in a minute.
Yes, sir. Quick question, column F. You know, that shows tax exempt, but that's presumably if we could refinance with tax exempt bonds, which we can't do, right? I mean, so you're showing that, I'm just trying to figure that 1.5 million total at the bottom, and this is really just for, to show the difference between taxable and tax exempt bonds, if we were to go out and not refinance, but finance something else, right?
Actually, it has to do with the timeframe. So up here at the top, what we're assuming for current market and these two sensitivities is that we would move forward with the refinancing through this current VRA pool on a taxable basis. Then to show what the timing would be, if we waited 18 months and rates didn't change at all, that's what column E is. And then column F is if we waited three years to the call date, it would become a current call opportunity and you could refund it on a tax exempt basis. But that's assuming three years from now, rates have not moved, which is
Okay.
you know, unlikely, but we know they're going to bounce around, we just don't know where they're going to end up. For the purposes of column F, though, we've assumed today's rates would be applicable.
Okay, that was the piece of information I was trying to figure out. Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
You could wait three years, but there's a risk to waiting three years.
Right.
You've got a bird in the hand right now that produces a strong refunding result that would allow the water and sewer utility funds to get some savings to fund some projects. You could get more out of this refunding if you waited three years, but there's no guarantee three years down the road that opportunity is going to be there. But you're free to make that choice. You're free to bet on interest rates, in other words.
You just referenced for some reason utility, but this is general fund, correct? These were court, I thought this was refinancing of the courthouse, so I'm.
Maybe, I think we thought, purposes, I think we thought that
Okay.
from staff, we thought that the savings could be redirected to utilities, but you're correct, it's refunding the courthouse.
Right, these are, these are, these are refunding general fund expenditures. If we wanted to then loan the utility fund money from general fund savings, we've done that in the past, we could do that right now. We've got money to do that. These are, this is not, this is, this would be commingling our funds, which, I mean, yes, we've got pressing need right now in utilities, we always will, we always do, but we could at any time loan money from the general fund or, you know, unappropriated fund balance to the utility fund like we have done in the past. So I just, to clarify that, okay.
Yes, that is correct. This is
To point out, you know, if you all remember, last year in September, at the conclusion of fiscal year 2019, we had to bail out the utility fund by $540,000 because of an overage in wastewater costs. And so in one year, we did nothing fun with that 540 grand, but the general fund savings bailed out the utility fund last year, almost to the amount of the savings that we would be getting right now if we were to do this with these bonds. So I mean, it sounds great, but the money has been spent, you know, already in a way.
That is correct, David. These, the savings from these bonds, you know, overall reduce the debt service for the city that, you know, we're paying out in 2013, 16, and 18 bonds. So this could be for potential savings for utility projects. This could be allocated to other capital projects. This is just a means of freeing up cash flow between all funds in general in the short term period.
Bond trucking, RT.
Okay. So just to, just to complete the loop on this page for columns E and F, just want to make sure we hit on this because it's important. The, the column E, again, that would be waiting 18 months, assuming cash, excuse me, assuming interest rates were to stay at current levels, that escrow to the call date would get a little bit less expensive. However, if interest rates move up just 39 basis points, so 0.39%, call it 40 basis points, between now and 18 months from now, what we're saying is that this scenario, while it's attractive, it would be break even to what we've got in the current market. So if it went up any higher than 40 basis points, you would have been better off to go ahead and lock in the savings in the current market. Does that make sense? Okay. And then further, the last is even by waiting till the call date and even going to tax exempt rates, the, the market would actually have to, would only have to move up 1.6% to negate the benefit of today's dollars. Okay? So that's three years away. So like, so like Joe put it earlier, we've got a bird in the hand and some very nice savings that are, you know, a multiple of the industry benchmark of 3%. And what we would, what to focus in on, on page eight is, okay, we have current market again in column B. And if rates were to go up against us right now, between now and VRA's pricing October 28th, then we would hit 5% EB savings. Okay? So roughly half to 10% we're currently looking at. If rates went up 60 basis points, we'd be at 4% present value savings. Rates could go up as high as 70 basis points and we'd be at 3% EB savings. So this is the industry benchmark. You'd have good, you know, $15,000 a year in savings and save yourself $240,000 over the life. Obviously, we hope rates hang in there and we get the whole $747,000. But we know that the rates are going to ebb and flow up and down daily between now and pricing, and we just have to keep our eye on the market and be comfortable with whatever level we set by resolution, if that's your pleasure. And that's what this gray watermark comment over here is that we would propose that you, that you have bond council draft up a resolution if this is appetizing to you and you want to move forward, you would set a parameter in a resolution drafted by bond council to identify your preferred or comfortable level of savings. So if you gave staff, sorry, go ahead.
Let me just jump in here, RT. So a lot of numbers on the page, but let me just say, as sort of the guy with the gray hair in the room, I wouldn't recommend that you go below column C, which is the 5% present value savings. You, you have a very solid refunding. If you wait for two or three years, you could lose it if rates go up. But by the same token, you know, if you lose savings below, you know, if your savings are effectively cut almost in half, even though it's 5% present value savings and that would exceed the industry benchmark, you're still not going to feel good about losing more than half the savings. And if you go below that, the columns D or E, you're really not going to feel good about doing this transaction. You're bad off waiting. There's a lot of volatility in the market as we approach the national election on November 3rd. Rates could go up, could go down, they could go sideways, who really knows what's going to happen? But what the Fed is telling you and the markets are telling you is that interest rates are going to stay low and muted, even if we have a short-term spike in interest rates. So VRA sells bonds three times a year, spring, summer, and fall. If, if you can't meet a 5% net present value savings threshold, my recommendation is that you just tell VRA, thanks, but put us in the next pool or keep monitoring it for us. And you want to get a minimum level of savings out of this deal because the refunding bonds, the bonds that are going to be used to pay off your current 2013 bonds, are going to have a 10-year call on them. You're not going to be able to do anything with them for effectively seven, eight, nine years or more. So I would set the parameter in the resolution to be 5% or more, such that you can sleep at night knowing that you've got, even if rates go up between that pricing, you've got yourself a deal that you can live with. That's just our recommendation, fiduciary to you as financial advisor or looking out for your best interests.
Joe Frank Friedman, two quick questions. One, 6% is perfectly fine as well, if you wanted to make that the parameter, correct? You're recommending five.
Whatever savings you want, sir, mayor.
So, I mean, I know there's some variability in what, you know, in the market, but I mean, theoretically, we could say 7% or 8%, correct? I mean, I mean, it's just less likely that we would.
You could, it's just more likely that VRA would cancel you out of the pool if market rates move against you, you'd
Right.
you'd lose the opportunity. I mean, you have to, you have to make a comfort level judgment as to whether or not anything below $747,000 is, or, you know, maybe $600,000 is, is good enough for you or not.
If the pandemic continues and the economy continues to be sluggish, could be even cheaper in three years, but if some butts were candies and nuts, we'd all have a Merry Christmas, as my football coach used to say. Joe, you mentioned the upfront savings piece. Is this sensitivity reflective of those bonds as well?
I would defer to RT to answer that question.
Yeah, so what we are using here for the basis of this sensitivity analysis is the level savings approach. However, if, if you were to use one of the other upfront approaches, again, you're going to, it's going to reflect a little bit of change between the present value percentages and your dollars are going to change. We can actually load that in there or run that for you to see the next time for your, where you actually consider adopting the resolution. But it should be fairly, these rates, these present value rates should come in roughly at the same levels, meaning you're not upending the analysis and it's going to skew it materially one way or the other just by virtue of changing your savings approach. Does that make sense?
It does, and to state more specifically, if we went with the upfront savings that was front-loaded in the next two years, if I remember correctly, it doesn't make a break even point, nine basis points versus the 49 basis points. It doesn't skew it that way.
No, that, that should, that should remain fairly consistent. It might change a couple basis points here and there, but it's roughly the same. It would be roughly the same.
You're suggesting maybe 45 instead of 49, but certainly not 10 basis points break even.
Yeah, I'd like to run it before, but it's, again, yes, it should not, it should not change this analysis materially. If, this number will change down here more materially than that.
Thank you. Members of council, have any other questions?
I don't know where this is coming from, but does, do you see rate variation or volatility when we get closer to a VRA bond issuance date? I'm just curious.
Yeah, this is Joe. There's no, there's no variability that relates to VRA specifically. I will tell you that the, the preponderance of municipal bond market, which is give or take roughly eight to 13 billion give or take roughly eight to thirteen billion dollars a week. The last two weeks of October are going to be extraordinarily busy in the municipal marketplace. Because everybody is trying to get bonds priced before the election for the reason that
You've got that election.
Right after the election in twenty sixteen, when President Trump got elected, interest rates shot up for about three months. So no one can predict whether or not that's going to happen again. If, if Vice President Biden gets elected, maybe Orlando is, is mellow and temperate and muted. If Trump gets reelected, who really knows? Nobody has a personal ball on. I, I do know that, you know, a lot of issuers, VRA included, that are trying to get into the market prior to November third. The more supply there is, the tougher the pricing. So yeah, too much of a supply of anything. The price go down, price goes down, which means in the bond world, yields go up. So, you know, I think, um, having a, a solid savings parameter or a deal that you are comfortable with, you can live with, even if it's not perfect, even if it's not as quite as good as the deal that's before you today, setting that parameter at a level that you can live with is important. I mean, and I'm telling you this because I think it's the right thing to do. I mean, Davenport gets compensated if you do a transaction, but I don't want to see you do a transaction that's not in the best interest of the city of Lexington. So I want you to think about this parameter and be comfortable with the level of savings that you could get. Because I think that given the overall arc of interest rates, if it doesn't work this time, it's likely over the next one to three years to work out to be an equally good opportunity. So don't, don't jump at something. And, and just set a parameter that you're comfortable with. And if it works out great, you can lock in your upfront savings and do your other projects. But if, if it turns out that the markets move against you, you can be content with the fact that you're probably going to have another bite at the apple. That makes sense.
So is the goal of tonight for us to nod our head or, or, uh, be leaning in a direction to ask staff to work with Davenport on a certain option? Or just that we're like A, B or C, or that we are interested in doing this? Yes or no? I mean, are we? What, what is the ultimate direction that is being looked for tonight?
Oh, okay, Jim. Okay, Jim, to answer that question, I would also share that I think the big purpose of this evening is to say, do we want to move forward refinancing if that holds appeal? Let, let's move forward between now and, and October first. We'd need to get some discussion, have some discussion to figure out which avenue best suits what we're looking to accomplish, whether the, um, can't remember the term, but the, the, the level savings or the upfront savings, um, or, or what have you. And it could be, you know, between now and October first, if the bond market goes berserk, it goes up one percent, the discussion's over. But if we have no desire in saving our taxpayers' money and not refinancing these bonds, uh, on November eighteenth or October twenty-eighth, um, we need to let Davenport know now and they can go focus their efforts on something else.
And Frank, do we, tonight, do we need to decide on the percent net present value that we want to set as a target or a limit, lower limit?
I, I don't think so. I think you, we're digesting some, um, information and I think, um, I'd want to hear back from RT, uh, through staff on what those percentages are, the upfront versus the level funding. So we know exactly what those numbers look like based on, uh, current interest rates. Part of the conversation we had on Monday night at Blue Ridge Resource Authority, um, was the idea of a pullout date when, um, you're not making application with VRA. Not that we want to plan to do that. Uh, but RT, could you address that, um, from a timing standpoint? Assuming that we, uh, have bond council bring a resolution on October first, we're moving forward and for whatever reason, if City of Lexington decided we didn't want to go through with this, what's our drop dead date?
Yeah, that's a great question. So if you look at page nine, obviously we're here this evening talking through this opportunity and just looking for a general, like you put it, a nod of, do we continue? Do we continue forth and bring something back, um, to be sort of finalized by way of resolution on October first? What VRA has indicated is since this is already an existing VRA obligation, that would potentially be refunded through VRA, they would like to know the week of October fifth, whether you're in or out. Okay? And that's about the time you would have to, um, execute the bond sale agreement, uh, with VRA to say, we're in based on the parameter we set in our resolution, which might be for, for tonight's example, five percent present value savings. So that's, that's what the timing is. And then your interest rates would actually be locked in if they meet your parameters, when they price their bonds on October twenty-eighth. That's when they get fixed. It's just, it takes a couple of weeks to close on those bonds, uh, and get the documents finalized. But again, you would just have to take action potentially at your October first meeting. And just to clarify from earlier, you have some time between now and, and next, in the next couple of weeks to determine what that appropriate level is that y'all want to set. Bond council can start drafting the documents and resolution and put brackets around the information that would be decided at the council meeting on October first.
Remember the council? Do you have, uh, if you have a sense of, um, what parameters you're comfortable with? Glad for you to share that with all of us and staff right now. If you want to mull it over, that's fine too. But if you've got a strong conviction in direction, glad to, to hear that. But is, is there anyone that objects to moving forward with the idea of refinancing?
No, I, I, I guess i- if I had an objection, it would be to the five percent, that parameter number. That, that's the part that's that I'm struggling with. Not necessarily moving forward though.
Rather through seven percent perhaps?
Yes.
And, and again, uh, RT and Joseph don't dictate any of that. That's all market driven.
I, I understand, but, but you know, we are, we could theoretically refinance this in twenty twenty-three. So we are losing, you know, there, there, there's a lost opportunity here and we have to make a gamble as to where the interest rates are going. And I guess my personal feeling, you know, is I, if we're going to do this, we need to make better savings than the five percent is what I'm saying.
Absolutely.
The juice needs to be worth the squeeze.
Indeed. Council members, have any other questions for RT and Joseph? If not, gentlemen, thank you for joining us. RT, you can follow up with Jake on, um, those numbers we discussed. And, uh, I know you're always available for questions if council members have any questions.
Certainly. Thank you all again for allowing us to present this evening. Y'all have a good evening.
Have a safe journey home.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right. Now, next item of business, uh, is consideration of minutes. You had them distributed. With your packet. And, uh, if there are no objections or corrections or changes, we'll accept them as presented. Hearing none, they are accepted as presented. Uh, next item is citizens' remarks and comments. Janey, I'm not aware of anyone that, um, has joined us to make public comment of items not on the agenda or has written in. Is that correct?
You are correct.
Terrific. Although I'll just remind anybody listening in, uh, to our meeting, we do welcome citizens' remarks and comments and invite you to join us anytime. You can zoom in, uh, while we're meeting virtually, uh, by contacting Janey. Next item is consent agenda and the two items there before you, um, and would gladly, uh, ask for your consideration of these two items.
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I have a motion from David, a second from Chuck. Uh, I would ask for a roll call vote. Mr. Ayers?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Hens?
Aye.
Ms. Strawn?
Aye.
Alexander?
Aye.
Terrific. Thank you all. Uh, that is approved unanimously and greatly appreciate, uh, Stu Hollingsworth, uh, for joining us. I don't know if anyone has any questions about the J C's gobble wobble. Stu is here, uh, for your benefit if you do. But, uh, not, not seeing any hands waving. Uh, Stu, thank you. Have a great wobble and, uh, thank you for all the good things the J C's do in our community. Appreciate you being with us.
Yes. Thank you all for having me and I look forward to a good, successful and safe event.
Terrific, terrific. Run, run.
Thank you guys. Yes. Thank you.
All right. Uh, next item, uh, boards and commissions, Blue Ridge Resource Authority. Mr. Smith?
There we go. You heard the meat of, uh, some of the, the refinancing, uh, or not refinancing, financing we're, we're investigating, but, um, the meat and potatoes. Landfill closure project, uh, continues to move forward. No, no concerns about not meeting the deadline in December. One small problem, there was some glass exposed during some road construction when a road was moved. So we're getting some, some leachate, uh, moving, uh, into a channel that's being repaired with some funding from the closure, post-closure funds. Uh, but it's fairly minimal. The cell two financing, uh, we're moving forward with, uh, Davenport with a two-pronged approach. VRA financing or, um, or bank financing. And depending on, you know, of course, who has a better rate, uh, that's who we'll go with. But, uh, we, our preferences for VRA, they tend to be more attractive, but the way, as we just heard the markets are going, things are a little less certain than they had been in the past. So we, uh, we have directed staff to, um, draft a resolution to move forward with VRA with contingencies similar to, uh, something we, we may go forward and with, uh, uh, with our bond financing. If, 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 uh, VR rates, VRA rates go past a certain point, then we have the opportunity to, uh, withdraw, uh, from the pool. So we're, we're moving forward with that. Did I cover that right, Jake?
Sorry, Chuck. Yes, you did. That, that's basically it. Um, their parameter set and the financing resolution that if interest rates go over a certain threshold or if the par amount of the bond, uh, to a certain threshold, the B R A can withdraw and pursue the bank loan.
Uh, the dates that were, uh, put forward by Davenport tonight are identical to the dates, uh, that, uh, B R I, B R R A are, are, uh, facing as well. So we'll be moving forward in step with, with the city if, if, um, that's what we're all going to do. Last was, uh, investing the, uh, closure, post-closure funds that we need to keep in reserve into the Virginia investment pool, uh, to, uh, take advantage of some better rates of return, especially for the long term than, than what we're, uh, getting now, which is more or less money market, uh, returns, which are just barely above zero right now. If we don't take advantage of that, uh, when post, when closure, post-closure, uh, comes due, we may find ourselves a little short. Granted, that's decades down the road, but the sooner we get involved with, uh, taking advantage of some higher interest rates, uh, for a better return, the, the better off we'll be. And, uh, that's my report. Any questions?
Chuck, one question. You mentioned the, uh, crushed glass in the roadbed causing the problem. Is the, are they still recycling glass from the county? I know we're not sending glass there, but is, are they crushing glass from the county?
To the best of my knowledge, they are, but using it as cover. Uh, this was used in road construction. And when the road was moved, it exposed the glass and that's been causing, uh, a little bit of problem. But for, for cover material, yes, the, as far as I know, the, the, the landfill is still using glass from the county, but they are being charged as the city was before twenty-five bucks a ton. So it, it's in the county's better interest to recycle glass because it is, it is used as materials, not being thrown into the landfills, not classified as landfill materials, classified as, 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 as a useful material. So we can, uh, charge a, a lower rate on it, or the landfill can charge a lower rate on it. But, you know, something may be interesting to look at to see what those tonnages, uh, had been historically and see what, what impact that's having on, on all parties involved.
Leslie, that was, uh, road construction in two thousand and sixteen that, uh, where the crushed glass was the roadway.
Yeah. Was that glass that they crushed themselves? I guess, yeah.
Uh, that was when it was the Rockbridge County Waste as opposed to the Blue Ridge Resource Authority. Same location.
Time man for just a second. Um, Leslie, the, the glass that B R A was receiving at that time was, uh, crushed glass that they were receiving from Roanoke, um, on, um, loads that were returned, uh, or recycling would be sent up to RDS. They were returning back loads of crushed glass from Roanoke. And at the time, the, the B R A was experimenting with it for road base, uh, daily cover and, you know, various other uses, alternative uses.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Chuck. Uh, Main Street Lexington.
We met on Tuesday, September eighth, and it's been busy there. The Get Downtown event, they, Main Street gave out three hundred bags with maps, merchant swag and created special landing page for the first years with videos from our businesses. And you can visit the, uh, Main Street Lexington website under the Get Downtown tab to see those. The Garden Club video, I told you that, uh, we were recognized by the Garden Club of Virginia along with Gloucester. Well, the Garden Club's annual conservation forum is in late October and Main Street's putting together a video showcasing how various partners work together over the past six years to make our downtown vibrant and beautiful. And some of the examples that'll be shown are the hanging baskets sponsored by all the area garden clubs and the Chamber of Commerce, the Righteous Rascals, sorry, Righteous Rascals, those bricks in Lexington, the planners at individual businesses encouraged by Main Street's, uh, in Bloom program, the alley improvements, uh, Lexington Garden Club sponsorship of the alley planners and benches, Stonewall Jackson House and Campbell House Gardens were showcased. And tourism was interviewed at the front door to our community and the video will be, is being edited. So stay tuned and we'll get you more details so that you can see it as well. The design committee is looking at locations and funding for a temporary mural downtown. The Lex, Liftlex program, the gift card program, uh, as a result of that program, eleven thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars has been distributed to forty-five businesses over the past four months and four thousand, two hundred dollars has been distributed to fourteen employees through the emergency fund. So if you're looking for gift ideas, think of the Liftlex gift card program. It's helping all of our businesses and their employees as well. There's e-commerce workshops. Main Street is going to sponsor a six-week workshop presented by Emily Davis of Link House Consultants and other experts to help businesses have a more robust online presence in preparation for the holiday season. And Main Street will use money from the Liftlex grant and possibly add more classes into the, uh, into next year in preparation of tax season. There's a hundred thousand dollar Go VA grant that, uh, Main Street is working together with the Chamber of Commerce Economic Development Committee and, uh, they'll apply for the hundred thousand dollar Go VA grant by tying into And they'll apply for the $100,000 Go VA Grant by tying into Main Street's Stay to Stay Initiative in the Rockbridge 2020 website update, potentially like in a second story development in Lexington along with some county business development. And Main Street's working with Frazier Associates to look at development of the second floor story, second stories downtown in sign design as well. Main Streets agree to be a partner with the Walker Program, which brings community partners together to establish and support businesses owned by people of color. It's a coalition of area organizations that that's come together to launch a community wide initiative aimed at helping jumpstart businesses owned by people of color in Lexington, Buena Vista and Rockbridge. The Harry Lee and Eliza Walker Memorial Entrepreneurship Program, which is known as the Walker Program, combines free business training, grant funding and ongoing support to committed individuals who want to start or grow a business in our area. So it'll draw on proven small business development techniques like intensive small group training, one-on-one counseling by established business advisors in donation of in-kind services from professionals in the accounting, legal, marketing and advertising fields. And some upcoming events, the Science Festival. Where that's been changed a little bit. We're working through the schools now, providing the science kits. This year, as I mentioned last meeting, we're providing science kits, take home kits for experiments that the kids can do. And those are going to be distributed to this area elementary schools. It'll go to the second through fifth graders. So they'll have at least 300 kits that they're already giving out. And for Halloween, Halloween's going to look a little different as well, but it'll be a lot of fun. It'll be an all day event. Halloween this year is on Saturday, October 31st. And the downtown businesses, some will participate in giving out candy downtown throughout the day, not at a set time. And so because it will, we will space out having people downtown, there will not be any street closure downtown, but it'll still be a fun event. So Main Street's working to have all the the events they usually have and we haven't had any cancellations and we don't plan to have any cancellations. They'll just look a little different in this environment. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Leslie. Any questions for Leslie? Leslie, I have two. One, has anyone alerted Chief Dickerson and planned for additional personnel for when all these science projects go home? Just kidding. It could get dangerous out there. You mentioned sign design by Frazier and Associates.
Right.
Is that, talk about that. Is that for businesses or?
It is for businesses and I'm not, I don't know too many details on that. I just know that they're working with Frazier and Associates on it.
So check, check with Rebecca for more details.
Yeah.
Right. Terrific. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Planning Commission.
We met last Thursday and we had our public hearing on the comprehensive plan that went very well. We had a few comments that we were able to address at the meeting and either make some minor changes to the plan or address the comments. And so as a result, we approved the plan. So that will be coming forward to City Council.
And I'm trying to remember, Jim, can you chime in the, is it on the October 1st meeting that we have a joint meeting with the planning commission to review?
Yes, sir. Work session.
Perfect. So look forward to reviewing the pieces that the planning commission has put together, the the whole plan that is and and sorting through those. So be prepared. If I understood correctly from Arnie, it's approximately 198 page document. So make a little time between now and the the first to study the numbers from Davenport and the comp plan from a planning commission. Good, good work, Leslie. Thank you. Regional Tourism Board.
Hey, yeah, the board met yesterday, September 16th, and we got a new look at the, or a look at the new Wander Love program or campaign. And specifically, a couple of elements of it, the online video, which is going to run on Facebook and the radio spot that was created for the campaign and the 32nd radio spot is currently running on WREL and 3WZ with coverage out to Lynchburg, Charlottesville and Covington. And I actually have that and I'm gonna try to play it for you. So hang on one second. Janie, I think I need to take over the the screen sharing. Or if you want to play that video, I mean, that audio, you can. Oh, hang on, hang on.
Sorry, I was trying to figure out how to unshare that screen.
Let me know if you can hear this.
Wander Love. Whether you're looking for a weekend escape or a week long adventure, your Wander Love Small Town's big backyard road trip begins in Lexington. Nestled within 65,000 acres of public forests, parks, recreation areas and two rivers, where all can hike, bike, paddle and fish. With Lexington is your base camp. Your Wander Love adventure includes six must do activities, including the geological wonder of Natural Bridge State Park. An afternoon of paddling, fishing and wildlife along the Upper James River Water Trail. Relax and enjoy the companionship of good friends and tasty brews on the Shenandoah Beer Works Trail. Breeze past pastoral landscapes and quaint cities as you bike the valley. Put on your walking shoes and enjoy the beauty of Glenmorey Park and search the Chesapeake and Ohio Railroad bed and canal tow paths on the Chessey Nature Trail. You don't need to leave the state for great adventure. Your Wander Love Small Town's big backyard road trip begins in Lexington, a Virginia Main Street community. Learn more at LexingtonVirginia.com.
Sorry, that was a, that was a minute, not 30 seconds. But the spot is a good example of how regional tourism's messaging has had to adapt during this era. We're kind of focusing on outdoor activities because that's clearly what visitors are most interested in. They're not, you know, that that's the focus. And that can really be seen in the traffic figures for Natural Bridge State Park, which is me actually seeing more visitors now than it did pre COVID. For instance, the park had a record breaking Labor Day weekend, finishing the three day weekend with 85,000 in revenue, including emissions and merchandise and serving 7,763 guests. That was about 30% over last year's Labor Day weekend take. In fact, Saturday was their highest grossing revenue day since becoming a state park with one day revenue of 29,976. A couple of events to mention. First, you guys may have noticed a lot of Porsches in Lexington today. The Porsche Club of America is hosting an event today, tomorrow and Saturday at the Homestead. And they have daily excursions to Lexington scheduled for attendees. So each day about 20 to 25 member Porsches will make the drive from Homestead to Lexington. And they'll be making the downtown visitor center their base camp and they'll be here about 11 o'clock, arrive here around 11 o'clock each day. So Wednesday, September 23rd at noon, there's a river rip, excuse me, ribbon cutting ceremony sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce for the new Quaker Steak and Lube Family Restaurant in Rafine, Virginia. The new restaurant seats 250 and features auto race cars, motorcycles and memorabilia throughout the facility. This is a part of White's Travel Centers. The Burke Stressors have done this. And if you're not familiar with Quaker Steak, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a chain and they probably have about 40, 40 restaurants in the franchise across the country. September 25th, Natural Bridge State Park will unveil a life-size love artwork on, at the visitor center, and that was created as part of the state and local partnership to promote travel and tourism. The artwork is an extension of the 50-year-old Virginia is for lovers brand. And this love works installation by Mark Klein will join more than 200 giant love letters in towns and cities across the state. And finally, want to mention that October 2nd is the cutoff for ad sales for the 2020 Visitors Guide. Hospitality businesses that are interested in advertising should contact Marketing Director Patty Williams at the Lexington Visitor Center at 4633777. Thank you. Any questions? No.
No. Well, well done and lots of neat things going on in the community. So look forward to hopefully taking in a few of those and supporting. It's nice to hear ribbon cutting taking place. Those have been lacking in COVID times. So excited for the Burke Stressor family. Next item is the Rockford Area Department of Social Services. Ms. Hens?
Hi, the board met yesterday virtually. And first we went over the Seven Hills Advisors, did a market survey for us for the new building location. There were six properties or six locations that were on this survey. One was very familiar. We've explored this option before was Magnolia Square at 650 North Lee Highway. That, you know, offer is 10 to 10,000 to 12,000 square feet. And there's parking, about 60 plus spaces and the quoted rate, you know, per square foot, you know, that just determined on the build out, what we want to do with that. The other location, there's a couple retail locations, College Square Shopping Center, I think you're all familiar with, there's some several spaces available, estimated 10,000 square feet. In that shopping center, I think it's the Peebles, for instance, that is now going to be vacant. And that also would probably require some pretty major changes or renovations and a build out as well. Another location, Bridge Works, I'm not sure if you're all familiar with that. That's an industrial type facility. It's a natural bridge. That's very large, 40,400 square feet and with abundant parking area. But the owner there would prefer to lease the entire building. That's a lot more space than we would need. Another retail location would be Stonewall Square Shopping Center. Several spaces available there. And then two properties of vacant land, one 534 East Nelson Street, that's three acres, that's I think behind Kroger's. That would also be, you know, cost depending on the build out, that would be worked out. And then another location on East Midland Trail, we, I don't think we're going to be interested. It's eight to nine acres. And it's a tricky location. Would need to get VDOT involved. So what we're going to do is we're going to meet as a group and tour some of those facilities. And then by have that hopefully within the next couple of weeks. And then by our next meeting, we will either determine, you know, how we want to move forward, even with one or or seriously consider a couple of properties. And then we also went over the financials. That's really, we're just two months in on that report and there's no concerns there. Our caseload, no surprise that our SNAP applications increase over the last month or 45 days with the unemployment benefits going away. That has had an effect on families in the area. We've also had new credit uptick in new application and cases with adult protection services. It went from 20 to 42 in a month of new applications. And then for child protective services, it went from 11 to 17 in a month. And obviously the COVID has had an effect on the families, the most vulnerable and particularly with the schools, you know, closed or at very little, you know, most of the children being at home in the schools were really a safety net for these kids. And I think it's been a real stress environment on on these families. So anyway, I hope that we can have some improvement in those areas next month. We did not have any children taken into care. So that's good. And and then Diana, I just wanted to say that in her report, she did mention that it was nice to hear about some community support. Grace Episcopal Church donated seven car seats to the agency. CASA also donated a variety of car and boost receipts. And K-Lira donated about 100 cloth face masks to the agency. And these, these were distributed to staff and also to, just so they could help if they're going out into the homes or to see clients. We can give those out if needed. So that's all I have to report. Frank, you're muted.
No report from Rara.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Thank you, Leslie. Threshold, Ms. Alexander.
Thank you. Threshold members on this past Tuesday met and received an update from city staff on the rehab progress on three additional properties since the COVID restrictions were partially lifted. And there may be three additional properties added to our rehab portfolio over the next month or two. And it was announced that Rara is having an uptick in requests for electric bill since cutoff notices went out just recently. And the same day on Tuesday, the governor announced that he was going to be working with utilities to request another moratorium to delay shut off notices again. And on a similar Rara related topic, it was noted that they are receiving calls about repairs needed of aging TV cable wiring being on the rise. And that seems to be in the Diamond Hill, Green Hill area. And it became evident during COVID when parents realized, you know, that their their children needed to have internet for and Wi-Fi for access for school. And we're having trouble with getting that access with the cable company. And we received the housing chapter of the draft comp plan for review and to make comments over the next two weeks. And Threshold is considering establishing an exploratory committee to determine how the call to action group should proceed with discussions on a community mortgage loan assistance program here to potential first time home buyers for the underserved population in the community. And the next meeting is October 20th. Thank you.
And Ms. Alexander, where do those, are those meetings held?
Our, the threshold meetings are on Zoom.
On Zoom. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Just to give people an opportunity to join you, if at all possible, in the interesting work that's going on with that organization or that group. Thank you. Carers Committee, have anything to report this evening?
Nothing formal to report, but I would just like to call attention to something provided to council by by staff just about the shifting guidance at times from the federal government. What the funds may be used for and how some thought was that the salaries of employees that are involved in public safety could be covered and then there might be guidance that they cannot be covered, this, that and the other. And as far as the city of Lexington, I think that we should feel good that our staff has taken a very measured approach to document everything, justify everything and even a conservative approach on what we may spend those dollars for. And of course, we are spending those dollars on, you know, getting the dollars to nonprofits, getting those dollars to, for business support, for public education and of course, PPE and other modifications to buildings for safety. And so I just caution, not caution, I want the public to know that our approach has been cautious and responsible. And just want to thank Jim and Jake and city staff for that.
We certainly echo that as a group and thank you and Leslie for serving on this committee and working diligently with the city staff to be so measured and thoughtful in your work. Thank you. Under my report, have a couple of items, as I indicated last time. Was running behind on reaching out to people, but I have several appointments for your consideration. And bear with me as I get the dates straight here. I'd like to start first with the ARB. Currently, Elizabeth Tafe is serving as an alternate and she had expressed an interest in becoming a permanent. And there's a vacancy on the ARB and I'd like to bring her name forward for vacancy that would serve through June 30 of 2020. that would serve through June 30 of 2024 and would welcome your consideration.
I moved to appoint Elizabeth Tafe to the ARB for a term extending to June 30, June 30, 2024.
I have a motion and second, any discussion? Roll call vote, Mr. Ziegler.
Aye.
Mr. Ayers.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Hents.
Aye.
Ms. Strong.
Aye.
Ms. Alexander.
Aye.
Thank you all very much. We also have an application from Chip Hansinger for the ARB and wanted to, and it would be filling the unexpired term of Elizabeth, and it would be expiring June 30 of 2022. I'd ask for your consideration for Chip Vernon Hansinger.
Moved to appoint Chip Hansinger to the ARB as an alternative, alternate. Do we know A or B? Whichever, alternate with a term expiring June 30, 2022.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Strong, Ms. Alexander. Again, roll call vote. Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Strong.
Aye.
Ziegler.
Aye.
Ayers.
Aye.
Hents.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Thank you all very much. Next, I'd like to move on to the Disability Services Board. It is a three-year term and would be expiring December of 2023 currently. Marquita Dunn had applied for that and would ask for your consideration for Marquita on the Disability Services Board, again, expiring December of 20, December 31, 2023. Sorry.
Second.
Janey, if you know who it was, good. I'm not sure who it was. Doc, excellent. And Marilyn with the second.
Yeah.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Ayers.
Aye.
Hents.
Aye.
Ziegler.
Aye.
Strong.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next are two, or... Janey, a quick question. Did you hear back from Trina Welsheimer?
I did not.
Okay. I wasn't able to reach her to confirm her interest in continuing to serve. So tonight, I'd like to bring forward two names for the Cemetery Advisory Board, Marquita Dunn and Julie Grover. Their terms would be two-year terms and would run through August 31 of 2022. And unless there's an objection, I'd like to take them together.
Moved to approve Marquita Dunn and Julie Grover for a two-year term ending 31/22 to Cemetery Board.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander. And Ms. Hents with the second. Any discussion?
Just a question. Was, I know Julie's reappointing. Was Marquita, did somebody come off the Cemetery Board?
Anne Nae is choosing not to serve longer. She notifies that she was stepping down after several years of service.
Okay. Well, thank you to Anne for her service and for all these people who are willing to serve on these boards.
Absolutely. Thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call vote on Julie Grover and Marquita Dunn to the Cemetery Board. Roll call vote, Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ziegler.
Aye.
Strong.
Aye.
Ayers.
Aye.
Hents.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Wonderful. Thank you. I'm excited to have someone from the Diamond Hill neighborhood serving on the Cemetery Board. I'm not sure when that last took place, but greatly appreciate Marquita willing to serve in that fashion. I think those were all the appointments. I will send to you later, but wanted to update you. I participate on the VML Legislative Committee, and we met on September 10. It was a lengthy meeting, but a very informative meeting. Jim Regenwald sent out and reviewed some financial numbers for the special session in the next biennium and what our legislators are wrestling with. And I won't bore you with all the gory details, but suffice to say, there's a hole in their budget where in February, March, they were fighting over, I think, $300 million and how best to allocate it. There's a big hole for the biennium, a little over $2 billion. And he's got some wonderful anecdotes and information that I'll, again, forward to you via email. There was also an update from Allison Robbins, who serves as the State Registrar Board Chair. She's the Wise County Registrar, incredibly useful and helpful information on how this election is going to be different and absentee ballots and all the provisions that the registrars and best practices that they're doing to make this election as smooth as possible. We also had John Clare, who's a retired military officer, who's the Town of Marion Police Department Chief, talking about qualified immunity and the changes and the things that are being proposed on the state level regarding our police force. Very informative, again, and different times than we're seeing with police. And another major item, the City of Lexington has adopted Juneteenth as a city holiday for the foreseeable future. Mercury Payton, who's the town manager of Vienna, brought forth an idea, proposed Liberty Day/Liberty Month resolution that he's pursuing through the General Assembly. It would be somewhat broadening the scope of Juneteenth to acknowledge the significance of several, let me see if I can find it very quickly, and I can't, but several of the amendments, including the 13th Amendment, I believe the 14th Amendment, and some others. Again, I'll forward the resolution for your consideration. But I mentioned to Jim before, we adopted it by ordinance of Juneteenth. If this were to get some traction, this may be a different celebration that the city may want to consider. And the proposed time would be the third Monday in July from that standpoint. But again, I'll forward those details to you and copy in the press so they're aware. But all in all, a very productive meeting. The last part of it was spent on the legislative proposals, funding and support for stormwater local assistance, up to $50 million annually as we all sort with stormwater issues. And then one of the other major issues was the cost, the funding of the real cost of education. The SOQs are one number, and what the state sends and approves is another. So I think you'll find that information very positive and informative. The last piece of my report, as I mentioned in the work session, again, I thought Bill and his team did a great job, and it's neat to see the finished product of the plan. And I look forward to discussions by council to work on budget appropriation and capital projects with the Jordan's Point Plan. As I mentioned, a practice that I feel is very significant is to accept the plan as presented from the organization for council, again, to be working on how we move forward and implementing. There may be some things we can never do because of funding, and there may be things that we can do very quickly. But I would ask for your consideration of accepting the Jordan's Point Park Plan this evening from LPDA.
I moved, we, sorry, I moved that we accept the Jordan's Point Plan presented by LPDA tonight.
Thank you, Dennis. Marilyn with the second.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Here, I would ask for a roll call vote. Mr. Smith. I got your thumbs up. Ms. Hents.
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler.
Aye.
Strong.
Aye.
Ayers.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Motion. There it is. Very good. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much. And again, I look forward to the follow-up from Bill on if we can find $100,000, how best to expend that capital and make that more functioning and positive experience for all of our citizens. And I said lastly, but really lastly, in your, I believe it was the water bill, received information on remembering to exercise your right to vote, reminding everyone the options of curbside and in-person voting, in-person absentee voting, and mail-in absentee voting, and then, of course, in-person voting on the day. But be sure to be aware and do what works best for you to avoid long lines or inconveniences to make sure that you exercise your right to vote.
Yep. Frank, and just to emphasize that, that starts tomorrow. So starting tomorrow, you can have no excuse early absentee voting.
September 18 through October 31 at City Hall, nine to five, close from 12:30 to 1:30 for lunch. But otherwise, they're available for in-person absentee voting. Thank you, Leslie.
I have one question or one more thing to report. For the VML Virtual Conference on October 7 and 8, I'm signed up to do it. Is anybody else doing that yet? Well, think about it. It's October 7 and 8.
I think a few of us got signed up.我可以 verify with Janey, because I think I'm signed up as well. I think.
I have only heard back from Leslie, and I registered her a couple days ago. It looks like a pretty interesting lineup for you guys this year. So like Leslie said, you know, consider it.
Absolutely. When's the deadline for signing up?
I believe it is September 25.
Okay. Terrific. Not, haven't missed the boat yet. I gotta quit saying lastly. I just wanted to also acknowledge Constitution Week. In honor of that, provided a proclamation to a group led by Sharon Littley at the Rockbridge Regional Library today. There were groups in Goshen as well as the Beunivista Library, I believe, for celebration. And of course, most of us are most familiar with the preamble of "We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity to ordain and establish this Constitution for the United States of America." This marks the 223rd year, if I remember correctly, from our proclamation, and encourage everyone to acquaint themselves with the Constitution and all it stands for as the basis of our government. And with that, unless, any other questions or observations?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
In regard to your VML report about Liberty Day.
Yes, ma'am.
Did you say that that was in addition to or a substitute for Juneteenth?
It was building upon. It was not omitting. Mercury was still in negotiations with the leadership of the General Assembly as to how it might move forward. So it's not a done deal by any stretch, but is something... His observation was that Juneteenth obviously celebrated one circumstance, but there are a lot of accomplishments for people of color in many circumstances with several of the amendments and civil rights activity of the 60s and what have you. The resolution speaks to it. I'll get that to you very shortly.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to see that.
Absolutely. With that, I'll bounce pass it to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll share with you first that I've had a number of comments, and it's disappointing to say that in grass and landscape management this year, a few folks have noticed that in Jordan's Point Park and Oak Grove Cemetery and some of our other areas are green spaces, we've not been able to provide the maintenance that we typically have in the past. Part of that is because we've had a little bit of a rainy season. Things are growing very quickly. They're very green, and our staff cannot keep up. And most of you probably know that typically, we have two trustees from the jail working 40 hours a week to assist us just in those areas, cemeteries, parks, and other green spaces. This year, because of COVID, they're not allowed to leave the jail, so we've lost 80 hours a week of labor. The other thing you may recall is that we did cut two positions from the DPW budget this year, so we're down two positions. We also did not replace a mower for, right away, in grasscapes because of the cuts in the equipment replacement budget. So consequently, we're operating without the manpower and with some equipment problems that we didn't have in the past, and our folks are not providing the type of maintenance we'd like to provide. They're really working hard, but it's, you know, with those kind of losses and efficiency in ours, it does show in this particular year. Staff and I met with the organizers of the Christmas parade this week, and the Christmas parade is taking on a little bit of a different look because of COVID, like everything else. And it's going to be a drive-by Christmas parade. The floats will be parked on the side of Main Street, and people will drive by and view the floats as they drive by. Of course, the public can also walk down the sidewalks and see the floats as well. And city staff and I are working with the organizers of the parade to assist them and support them for this event, and also to assure ourselves and the parade organizers that the parade itself does not create too much of a disruption downtown or in our community regarding traffic, because obviously, a drive-by approach is going to be a little different than the approach we've had in the past. But it was very successful, and we're all looking forward to continuing that work. Speaking of work, Kendall continues to do some work, some additional construction and grading over there. They're doing some grading along the property line. It's a budding Confederate Cove. They're providing required stormwater swales and berms in order to route the stormwater off of the Confederate Cove area and off of their property into the stormwater detention pond in that area. They're also perhaps going to have to cut some trees down in that area to create those swales in order to take that stormwater away from those areas. I guess the next team to, next item to mention to you is the Community-Based Learning Group out of WNL is providing us with a team this year that will work with us, the WNL Student Consulting Team. There are three students involved who are, have expertise in education and finance, economic development, auditing, and local government. And they will be assessing city staff and myself to research and evaluate economic development options for the city during this current semester. It is anticipated they may also reach out to other of our surrounding partners and agencies who also work to enhance Lexington and our surrounding area and create business growth and job opportunities. So please take this time, if you see those folks, and if you're working with those folks, to assist that team. And David Shook, you might hear the name, is the team leader. But those are three students from WNL who will be working with us for the entire semester. Today, I participated in the Chessy Nature Trail Advisory Committee meeting, and it's a great local effort in collaboration with many local partners, including BMI, who's really taking the leadership in this. This is my first meeting. I have no involvement prior to this and take no credit for the accomplishments that occurred. But one important thing that is occurring, for those of you who may be familiar with the trail, is there's a bridge out around the South River Road area or the Old Shepherd's Road area. And that bridge will be replaced soon. Again, BMI has taken the lead in that project. It's approximately a $2 million-plus project, and they hope to start it this November and finishing in July of next year. And BMI recently put another $578,000 into the plan. And the Federal Highway Administration was also involved and put another $200,000 into the plan into the pedestrian bridge. So that's quite a substantial improvement. And I think BMI should definitely be congratulated as well as all the other volunteers who provide this important and vital resource for our community. And that's it tonight. A very short report.
Thank you, Jim. Any questions for the city manager? It's been a incredible growing season and keeping up with all the grass has been challenging to say the least, but great, greatly appreciate the the work the city crew does and keeping our streets clean and now paved and striped and looking good. Thank you, Jim. Jared, city attorney.
Good evening, all. I have no report, but happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
Members of the council, have any questions? Any idea what the interest rates will be in three years? Just kidding. The, thank you, Jared, and appreciate you being here and keeping an eye on us. Next item is new business, a resolution to approve a support agreement for the BRRA.
Mr. Mayor, our finance director, Jake Adams, will take that and this tis the season to be financing. So Jake, take it away.
Thank you, Jim. So as Chuck alluded to in his report a little bit earlier, the BRRA has determined to move forward with VRA financing in their fall 2020 pool for cell two of the landfill expansion project. As Chuck mentioned, the BRA did pursue a dual pronged approach, getting RFPs from several private bank issuers as well as pursuing applying for the VRA pool. The proceeds of the VRA pool are going to support the project fund, which is a little over $3.8 million. And about $438,000 of the amounts proceeds of the bond will go towards capitalized interest. And this is necessary in order to defer debt service payments on the new cell until it's constructed and operational, as well as to allow time for cell one debt to be paid off. The financing is for a 10 year term and this will roughly coincide with the expected life of cell two of landfill. Right now, that's just shy of nine years. There is some hope that they could exceed that with new compaction techniques as they continue to to fill in the cell over time. So again, as we mentioned earlier, the the date that these bonds will be sold is October 28. If there is a material fluctuation in the markets between now and that time, the BRA does does reserve the right to withdraw from the VRA financing pool and resume work with Truist Bank slash BBNT. They were the highest ranked offeror from the bank proposals. And the the parameters put into their resolution are if their total interest rate exceeds 1.75% or the par amount of the bond exceeds $5 million, that would trigger then withdrawing from the pool and considering the bank option. So very important distinction, the the request tonight is for adopting the resolution. And this resolution is in support of the support agreement. That that agreement will not be executed until the bond sale date on October 28. So this resolution only approves that agreement, but does not execute it at this time. So with that, I'll I'll be happy to take any questions you may have. And again, requesting support of this resolution to approve the support agreement.
Thank you, Jake. Members of council, have any questions regarding this? Hearing none would ask for your consideration of this item.
Make a motion. We adopt the resolution 2020-09 to approve a support agreement in connection with the issuance of a revenue bond by the Blue Ridge Resource Authority.
Second. A question by David and second by Chuck. Any discussion?
Only that I held back on the refinancing amount and let Jake handle that one. That's a big chunk of change. Thanks, Jake.
Very good. Roll call vote. Mr. Smith.
Hi.
Ms. Hens.
Hi.
Grayers.
Hi.
Ziegler.
Hi.
Strong.
Hi.
Ms. Alexander.
Hi.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much. Is there any other material or items to come before council this evening? Questions or concerns? We have no closed session. And if there is no further discussion or business, we will stand adjourned at 9:50. Hope everyone has a relaxing evening and thank you all for everything you do for our community.
Thank you.
Have a good one.